We're gonna do some review of that and for some questions about that tonight.
Yeah.
Which, uh, being, you know, being the kinda guy who has his PDA on one side and the old handwritten stuff on the other side.
And which one gets the action?
Oh, clearly, this is the one I live and die by.
The one that the battery failure has no impact on.
Exactly, exactly, you know?
Fine, and I'm that way, too.
Uh, so I sorta feel like, um, you know, I'm pretty much self-taught and relatively ignorant on the, on the technology.
Yeah.
Unlike some of us.
Well, uh, no, I'm not that much better, believe me. Thank you. Okay. Now, does that little TV over there work and do you actually put it on? Right, see that right there?
Where?
Right, see, right on the end, a little tiny screen, right there.
Oh, really? Can we, can we see if that actually-
Watch ourselves?
That's new?
That, I, I haven't seen it before, that would be cool.
I don't know.
It's just, you know, it's better than going home and watching.
Oh, it's broken, now it's broken.
Oh, it's broken!
Does it have an on/off? No? Maybe it comes on when the camera goes off? No?
I just would love to know when we're on and when we're not on, that's my thing with it.
So, does it work? Yeah?
It, no, yeah, well.
It's real TV.
You know, I'm-
Soaps!
Yeah, that's what we wanna be watching.
Yeah, make sure it's on the right channel over there.
Oh, we're watching downtown Miami.
We can suggest another broadcast this evening.
Uh, they just wanted to fake us out.
And this is a-
I get thirteen? No?
Interesting article. I brought in from last Sunday's Herald about superintendent show- ah!
Hi! Does that work, that little?
Yes, that's what I was up to.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so are we on yet, James, or not?
We are.
We are. Okay.
Here we go.
Is that, is there some way that we can actually see that so that we know?
Fortunately, the town council wants to, uh-
Keep it over there.
Have it on that side, so that's the best I can do for you.
That's all right.
Hey, I can't, I can't see a thing with that to know where we are, but.
Chuck can see it, right?
Yeah, they'll be able to see it, but we know we're on.
Oh, great, great, that's wonderful, that's absolutely wonderful. Thanks.
Maybe.
That's it.
Perfect, that's good.
Okay, yeah, that allows us to sort of see how we're, how we're doing there.
Do they have my good side?
No.
Don't got one.
But I don't wanna see it.
And the other thing that, that I wanted to say to you is that we're gonna talk about the technology plan tonight and the, uh-
We're on picture-in-picture.
Oh, okay.
This is you, this is the podium.
Great. And, um, um, we're, we're probably gonna be going a little bit out of sequence just because, um, Kathy and Chet are at the, uh-
Late.
SST and they'll be late, so.
She said that if you wanted to use me to fill in this space, you could.
I, clearly, that's the plan, so, you know, uh, if we're, if we're actually on the air, it is kinda seven-thirty, we might, uh, we might get started here. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Super, okay. Let me call the meeting to order by, uh, and read our, um, mission statement. "The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity and responds to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." And so, let me, um, call the meeting to order and welcome those of you who are watching at home. Uh, and let's, uh, say the pledge of allegiance here, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have huge members of the public to, uh, to make, uh, comments about the, uh, agenda tonight, so why don't we move on to the, uh, the minutes? Any comments on these? Did you guys get a chance to read these over?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May nineteenth meeting.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, do we need a second motion for the non-public session minutes?
Yes, yes. I will make a motion to accept the, uh, minutes from the non-public session on May nineteenth.
And I'll second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, um.
Maybe we should skip to the technology?
Yeah, I think that would be great. Why don't we just move right down, uh, to, uh, uh, the technology plan review? And, uh, have folks who, if they're comfortable, uh, I see that, uh, you've got this in front of you in terms of-
I do.
Questions and comments, and James, if you-
Well, maybe so.
If you would, uh-
Well, first, I'd like to commend you on a very thorough document. This was quite a bit of reading and, uh, was a good way to get up to speed with, um, how complex the networks are. We think about how complicated can a couple of schools and an SAU office be, but there's obviously a lot that goes on behind the curtain. I, I'm, uh, I guess there's a couple things that I'm curious of and, um, it's more in kind of the spirit of things than the, the details of how many servers we have doing what functionality, which is, um, what are we doing, and I'm not sure who to really ask this question to, but how do we push the, the technology that we have so that it gets used by the whole SAU, um, in, in ways that we can identify now and ways that we don't know yet? Maybe, uh, I'm thinking, you know, wouldn't it be wonderful if we have a unified calendar in the, for the school district that's, um, interleaved with the town so that it's easy to make sure that the, uh, father-daughter dance isn't on the same night as some other activity and, you know, all right?
Fortunately, a lot of our funding mandates that we separate two entities.
Okay.
We don't have the same programs for doing that, although we both have groupware which have, uh, mass calendaring features. We don't have the training yet to implement that, and, uh, I run around lots of lives and I would have to get it started. And, uh, the other side, the town side, has their, uh, outlook for their, uh, they're, they're not on, they're on internal server yet, so they don't have that facility yet to do a mass. Because things could happen, um, as long as we change the way our money is being used.
Is there integration, um, between the, um, elementary school and the junior, senior high school is, in, in that sort of functionality as far as scheduling teacher workshops or what have you?
We all have the, the same email system and there is a unified, uh, address book for the entire SAU. And we do, uh, mass mailing, so we have two groups, uh, three groups, actually. The, there's an all group which covers every staff member from the maintenance people all the way up to the superintendent. And there's the IHS all, which is all staff within the high school, and the NES all, which is the staff within the elementary school. So depending on who needs to get what information out, they just email one of those groups. And the, the calendar thing is definitely available, it's a matter of, you know, people, the team is twelve people. And I'm the only one right now, so that kinda, that would be a person who would go over the mail and groupware aspects somewhere down the line. It would make more of that happen, or we could hire another, or, you know, at least get some, somebody else wearing one hat already trained in groupwise enough to do anything, so maybe someone in the field will do that. There are many, many possibilities, so the basic infrastructure is there for all of those possibilities. What, what are your?
You've covered a lot of ground, um, I'm very impressed with where things are. Is there, are there thing, I guess, a, a general question that I don't need an answer for at this point, but I'm hoping that there's, there are things that down the road we can, um, I remember two weeks ago you spoke about maybe having a centralized document center and, um, which would be functional with wider bandwidth, um, with the FDDI network and all, um, the fiber optic. Is, are there, I'm just hoping that we can discover things that we can not print and either access via an Intranet or email, you know, daily bulletins or things like that and make the use of email a routine part of every day for all of us now.
It's not a mandate as of yet, um, that, that has to check their email every day. I think that is a high priority for the superintendent, and I'm not sure what the details are to make it a mandate. I know that she has said that we wanted to communicate with her, it's email. As far as telling all the staff that they must check their email every day, that's not happened yet, so that part of it isn't there. And as far as handling mass documents inside of the system, again, we're back on training. Groupwise has a, what they call a cabinet, and the cabinet can be personal and public and group shares for documents, calendars, um, collaborative works. A Word document can be started inside a groupwise, and you call two or three other people to work with you on it, and you could all have the document opening, be wordsmithing together. And when it, when the first person opens it, closes it, then that saves it. And it would be available to whoever you told that document to make itself available to. They're all there, all those features are in groupwise.
It's just a matter of training and support.
Training, right, support, exactly.
Although we do use it, we try to use it, we do encourage it. One of the things that I would like to put together is a benefits options for employees so that they can utilize that to research what they have rather than a phone call. So that's one of our goals, is to get that up and running, have that built. So that would, is that kinda what you're talking about? Someplace everyone can go to get information and-
Rather than having to main their own personal paper files or something like that.
Right, right, we're heading in that direction, and I know, James, you and I talked about, um, scanning all of our documents and keeping them in the computer opposed to in file cabinets.
Right.
So we're gonna try to head in that direction, but we're not there yet.
Is that more of a microfiche with a scanning system, is that what you're talking about for that?
Um.
It's actually just a server farm.
Okay.
A dedicated server.
Uh, the, the SA, the town offices have already purchased a system that we were hoping to, uh, buy access rights to. So we could use the hardware basically that allows us to scan and have our own farm. So we could have storage, 'cause it can get pretty weighty. A hundred and twenty gigabyte drive these days doesn't really go very far. As, when I started, I had a sixty gig hard drive and a eight gig of RAM in my first computer. And that's, that's a couple of documents today, and we just get more and more stuff in them. So we'd have to buy those modules to, to work with that system, but the system is there. And then in archiving, one of those things that's not covered by, if the town buys it, the school can't use it, or if the school buys it, the town can't use it, 'cause it's just archiving, it's not active. Services lost the work. And we do a lot of, or we're trying to do a lot more of, uh, keeping information on the website as live as possible, as up-to-date as possible, so that we have that point of access for, um, calendar-type things. It's, it's difficult, again, there's more people, people who already know how to write HTML or can use, uh, front page or any of the other really big tools to make pages. Just get them set up, get them running, figure out what we're gonna have to do. And then, of course, since it's unwiable for every word that's printed on that thing directly by the state, and then, of course, all of you are too, but, uh, we have to make sure that it's governed by an, an internal body of some sort. We haven't figured any of that out yet. It's, it's all new, I've been here for three years and put it all together, and now we're just trying to get to the point where, okay, now it is, it's functional and it's starting to stabilize, let's get into usage. One of our things in the tech plan is, uh, moving towards meeting all of the federal goals for, for PIPA, CIPA, and, uh, NCLB so that we can do data-driven decision-making and all that stuff from stuff that we have on the network.
When, when you talked earlier, Sue, about, you know, wanting people to be able to access and understand their benefits and, and that sort of thing, is that a, a different HRIS system or is that more something, you know?
Well, I, I think one of the, the plans that I had, one of the groups we've discussed, um, other benefits, that they could set that up for us and get it running, up and running, and monitor it for us, maintain it. So what I would, my plan is that if someone, instead of someone picking up the phone and saying, "What am I currently subscribing to?" They can just go out there and find out on the Internet or web where their file is, and they can pick up all that information off the file rather than call.
And so that's being done, and that software package is available in some ways through-
Yes.
-the management services-
Right, right.
...organization that the district already belongs to for joint purchasing.
Right.
So it's something that's proven in fairly easily-
Easy to navigate, yeah.
And something relatively easy to plug into the system without it being a, uh, anything built from scratch.
And that's what I would do, that's, that would make more sense than trying to build it ourselves and-
We offer one of those, it's just a gateway.
Right.
Just go on the Internet.
Yeah, right.
If we have an Internet connection to their webpage and work through their gateway. So we wouldn't really be installing anything locally at all.
Okay.
Other than handing out a, uh, favor or a money, which I can do.
Yeah, it, uh, in all likelihood, people can access, directly access benefits. For example, I think the employee assistance program we have now has, or many of them, I'm not sure about the current one, have web-based services that people can, you can put a hot link on and you're right there to, to download the information. So, you know, like other sort of benefits, people can access them more easily.
And I think, we already have the link for Cigna, but they find that not many people actually use it. Because it isn't personal, it doesn't relate to them. So I think if we had that piece there, people might more than likely go on and check it out. You know, just, it's another way to make people want to use it, you know, rather than, I don't know, I don't know what you think about that. I think we have a lot of people that use it all of the time, but we have some people that really don't, not because they don't have access. What do you think, is it a time element, is a?
It's probably the, you know, we-
And training, training too, I think that's where we-
I just look at a lot of people that are not all that web-savvy.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause it seems to me that most, um, services like that have, they are personalized.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they know what, what plan you are, you, you know, and oftentimes will show you all of the claims that you've submitted.
Yes.
You know, so I think it probably is very personalized, and, and it sounds to me probably more like it's just an issue of training them on how to use it.
Yeah.
And what I, what I've seen in some of my work in this area is that there are now folks who are employees who kind of grew, grew up with this, and then there's some of us who are a little bit, uh, you know, coming to the party a little bit later and it's, and the learning curve seems vertical, you know? And, uh, and the issue of training, uh, uh, our, our comfort level with, with going and talking to a live human and looking at something on paper is much higher than, uh, trying to navigate the web to access the same information.
As we see more people do electronic banking, we'll start to see them utilize more of their-
Yeah.
...services online. It's kinda takes a lot of effort. I know I do everything anyway, but it's just 'cause I'm assured, because I built it, that I'm not gonna lose my data.
James, can you talk a little bit about your plans for the elementary school? And, um, the, the wiring of the network and, and what, what you need and what kinda help you might need? And, you know, we have some community members watching, so maybe we can talk a little bit about that.
Followed up, right?
Yeah.
Three years ago, when we first put the money in the budget for hardware, our first, uh, rev, rev, uh, first revision of the tech plan called for us to look at, uh, desktops every third year and, and infrastructure every third year and, and software every third year. So three years ago, when we did that, we, we put, uh, a great bulk of the money into the high school because they had very limited desktops, I mean, there was almost none. And what was going on at the elementary school was fairly comfortable for all of them, and we brought in a mobile lab at that time for the elementary school. Now, we're looking at, at, I would say, somewhere in the eighty-five, ninety percent of the machines at the elementary school are Pentium III and below, and they're, they're at a two-machine per, per classroom level. And over the building, there are about six to one, uh, computer, students to computers. And what I'd like to do is to, um, put in a terminal server, a rather large hefty server that can handle eighty-somewhat terminals. That would give us three new machines per room, per total of five per room. One of the stumbling blocks is that the existing wiring from the net that it was done, I think it was six years ago, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, uh, is just enough to handle what's in the building as it is now. So I was hoping that we could coordinate with the town folk a net day. I'd like to get ahold of, uh, three electricians or three people who at least have done, have done journey work in their past. So who could manage three teams, and we could pull wire to each of the classrooms so that we could bring in all this new hardware and support it with a direct wire to each link. Because the more hardware we put between the desktop and the server, the slower the link goes. And since these terminals aren't going to have a hard drive in them, and they're gonna last us a good ten years, like the wire that services them, that feeds them everything that they do, to be its optimum performance level.
So we need, um, so we need to try to find three electricians to volunteer services and-
To wanting other people to just move-
Pull the, pull the-
Piles, I should say, and, uh, and, you know, we can climb a ladder and pull wire for three, four feet and move the ladder and pull wire for another three or four feet, while the electrician makes sure that we're not breaking any codes or putting the wire in a place in the ceiling that's gonna, that's gonna harm the signal. Fluorescent lamps do a job on, uh, ethernet signals, so we have to be careful of all that. Any kinda transformer would hurt it as well.
Okay, so maybe we can somehow try to coordinate so that maybe, uh, people interested in, um, in volunteering for this can contact, should we contact the SAU, should we contact the elementary school?
That would be fine.
So, um-
The SAU would be a good way to coordinate these central offices.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And James, do you have any date where you might be, any projected date or?
Somewhere in the next two months before school starts, depending on whether or not we can get the, the people we need.
Okay.
Glad to buy lunch for everyone.
Weekend, weekday?
Weekend would probably be easier for most of the people who wanna volunteer, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what we'll try to do is post something on the channel, on, on Channel thirteen, and, uh, maybe through email, try to contact some local groups to see if we can get, um, some people involved. But, but the, the, the thing that we really need is the three electricians, so.
We need to break this into three teams.
Okay.
And have the electricians definitely manage the poles. I mean, the electricians will probably end up standing there all day long, watching what's going on, because we're gonna have twenty people hanging around, but-
Yeah.
It's safer that way.
Right.
Make sure that we get a good setup, and I can't be everywhere, so.
Sure.
Perfect chance, and we're going to move some of the SAU offices sometime this summer, and, uh, if we can get all of this done and we get a nice rap out of it, we can just hop over with one of the teams and move, pull them, six or eight more wires we need to move upstairs here, uh, for the new, uh, curriculum coordinator and the new business manager's office.
Right.
So essentially, it's a doubling of the number of cables in the elementary school that are currently there.
Right, right now, there's one, sometimes two, and there's two computers already hooked to them. And I'd like to bring three new wires per classroom.
What, what do you have to say to folks who are maybe wondering, "Okay, so how come we're not doing wireless?"
Well, the terminals don't run on wireless, for one. These terminals will outlast any PC that we would buy when the changing technology, and ninety percent of what the kids are doing down there are, are little games, little, you know, Reader Rabbits and, and Math Rabbits and those things, which don't need a lot of horsepower, they're just color-intensive, and the terminals we're buying are, got good video display properties. And because they do everything over the wire, they need the true hundred megabit connection.
Okay, good.
As I recall, from pulling wires that day, five or so years ago, that was all done in the morning. It wasn't, um, it wasn't, uh, you know, a ten-hour day by any stretch. There were a lot of folks, a lot of folks came out to do it, and it was many hands late work.
Yes, exactly my thoughts, if we could have this really done quickly and, uh, it's roughly ten thousand dollars to have it done. So, twenty-seven rooms, three were wire runs apiece, and a hundred dollars-
Yeah, I have no idea.
Twenty-five dollars a wire run, that's roughly ten, ten thousand dollars.
I just wanna, uh, we, we seem to be fading in and out on this little monitor, James, just to-
Yeah, it's just the, it's the wiring.
Just our little cord, okay, that's fine.
Just wanna make sure it wasn't the TV going on, yeah.
Do, do we have more questions for James on the, on the plan itself? Or parts that we would like him to give more detail than he did in the last go, go-round?
I really don't, I, I, uh, I concur with Cliff that he did a really thorough job and-
Reimpressing, and I have to say on that note that Ms. Teinberg and Mr. Mark Lou, both teachers at the high school, and Ms. Deborah Roy, teacher at the elementary school, did help quite a lot to, to both wordsmith and help track down certain things that are curriculum-related that I'm not trained to either know or understand sometimes.
Now, I'm working, while I very briefly looked at the last go-round of this, I'm working on the assumption that this really does piggyback on the previous technology plan, and, and it is really a state requirement that we have an approved plan with respect to our funding for technology in an ongoing way. So, tonight, what we're really looking to do is to approve, approve this document and, and move this forward, because it's critical not only for us to have the technology for, uh, for our kids and to continue to, to build on what we've done in the past, but, uh, it would be nice to, uh, to have the funding there for that as well, and, and a significant portion of that does come from, uh, the state.
Mm-hmm.
There's a significant portion of our technology funds that come because we have the plan in place.
Right.
Well, I would like to make a motion to accept, uh, to approve the technology plan as presented by James Tremblay.
I'd be happy to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you for all the hard work and thank you to the, the whole team.
Yeah.
I'll pass on you, thanks.
Thanks a lot, James.
And I'm gonna go back to my second job downstairs.
Your station.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Okay. In, in accordance with the, the jumping-around piece that we're doing, uh-
The theme of the evening.
The theme of the evening will be a little bit of, uh, of, of jumping around. Sue, do, do you, uh, would you care to kinda give us a, oh, a, a budget update?
Sure.
And, uh, welcome, you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Let them get settled and-
We've actually approved the technology plan, just to give you a heads-up on that. And, um, Sue was about to give us a budget update, you have, we have some things in our packets and, actually, on the desktop.
Right, should be a big, thick packet that I put in front of you.
Yep.
That's the latest update, similar format that I always give to you. I have included the entire budget if you wanna see line item by line item. But that's my latest projection for June thirtieth, still have another month to go.
So we're looking at an eleven thousand dollar balance, which is like, you know, a hundredth of a percent? What, 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 you know, how, what are we talking about here in terms of, uh?
No, I didn't do that, but I, I should, no, 'cause you always ask me that question.
You know, is it, it's less than a percent, I gotta be figuring.
Well, we have an eleven million dollar budget.
Yeah, I thought it was that one percent, close to, uh?
Right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a squeaker.
It is, and I, I think it's-
That's a good budgeting. Well.
It's conservative, too, I would expect more, but I'm very conservative.
Okay. Well, this is a, this is a situation, and mostly for the, uh, for the folks. Well, this is a, this is a situation, and mostly for the, uh, for the folks at home, where if there is any surplus, even though, uh, a, a one percent surplus is hard to, to, we just hope it's not a deficit, uh, whatever there is, is, is already allocated for certain funds, uh, with respect to facilities and the special ed fund and, uh-
Technology.
Technology, so if there is anything left over, uh, it goes back in the system to support some very specific initiatives that the voters have already approved.
Right, for the warrant articles that we, that just passed.
Yeah. That's great. More, more that you wanna say on this?
Not really. I just wondered if you had any questions. It's pretty basic. I'll be back next month, next meeting, as we get closer.
Actually, I think our, our next meeting is really a, uh, on the eighth is really a kind of a personnel-related meeting, but on the following-
On the sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Actually, you know, Sue, uh, are there any, have any staff members, um, expressed concern that, that there wasn't money in the budget for something that they really needed this year? I mean, is there anything that, you know, that people are really-
Not, not that I can recall, and I think if we could, we've tried to honor them. I believe in my numbers here, there were a couple that we were kinda holding off on, and we, that's included in here.
Okay.
Am I correct, Kathleen? We, we pretty much feel like we've satisfied all the needs.
I'm meeting with them throughout the year, you know, and periodically we check in, are there anything, is there anything that's come up during the course of the year that, you know, would improve your delivery of instruction? We do that all the time. And that, and the, um, the social studies department did a complete inventory of all the maps and globes, and, um, the maps and globes were in disrepair, they were very old. And, um, they worked with, um, Rand McNally, and they had proposed to me a replacement of maps and globes at the junior, senior high school, and I supported that.
Okay.
And, uh, they reviewed everything, and I was very pleased, and I would like to be able to do that for the end of the year. But that's a good example of things that came up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a couple of, in the elementary school, one of the t, one of the classes, one of the team, grade-level teams wanted time for kids or scholastic news, and they hadn't had it, and they wanted it, so, you know, we, we make those, we try to make those adjustments during the year, too, even though you might not have seen that particular item.
Mm-hmm, in the budget, because it is difficult when they're, this time of the year, budgeting for eighteen months from now, things come up and we realize that.
Any other questions on the, uh, on the budget update before we move on? Would, uh, would you like to go ahead and talk about our water test results? Is that a, I see we have a, uh, little report here.
We have an update, and that is a test on the water cooler in the cafeteria.
Aha!
And, I can tell you what we've done is, we've replaced the water cooler. That was a suggestion, that perhaps the water cooler was old, and Cliff, you know more about this than I do, but apparently, when they were made twenty years ago, they had a tendency to have some parts in there that might cause lead to leach out of them and-
Yeah, lead line in-
Lead line.
Internal tanks, and, you know, and there's a whole list of them, I think, that are out there that were manufactured with that problem.
So we replaced that, retested, and that didn't do it. That was not the fix. So we've continued to close that off. Um, we are, actually, we had a need for a water cooler in another spot in the building, so we're gonna move that, so, you know, move that new water cooler to that spot where we originally, we didn't buy that one first. And we're gonna do some more investigating. Um, one of the suggestions is that we go out of the building and check the line where it comes in, have the town dig up that line and see if that's the problem. Because if we start in the building, we could continue to go forever and not find it, from what I understand. I mean, Cliff, you know more about this, but it's a dilemma, because we could, from what I'm told, we could change a lot of pipes and still not fix the problem, because we don't really know where the sources at this point. So, do you wanna?
Ju, just to, you know, put everyone a little bit at ease, um, there's no, um, water source in the building that students are using that do, did not meet the criteria. I just, I want to be very clear about that. When, in fact, we were concerned about the water cooler in the cafeteria, we, we turned it off.
Mm-hmm.
There's also one other site in the building, of which we are still trying to decide where, where, how it get, how the levels read as high as they do. And that was in the, uh, teacher's room on the first floor, and we've put a water bubbler, water cooler in there for the staff. So we haven't, you know, we haven't put anybody in, in harm's way because of this issue. And it's the only two in the building. This summer, we will, we'll do another complete check of the building.
Okay.
Right now, it's trying to find a needle in a haystack, because it could be as simple as lead, um, the lead solder that they used fifty years ago on pipes, because we have pipes that old in there. So it's a matter of ident, finding them and identifying them and replacing them.
One thing I have not seen is any data on the corrosivity of the water. Water that's more corrosive is more likely to leach metals from the lead and copper both, from the, the inside of the water cooler, or the pipes, or the solder that connects them. That should be data available, I would think, from the water department.
From the town, and I believe we've talked to them about that, haven't we?
We can get that report for you, though.
Get the report, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Do that.
Okay, uh, and the, uh, the firehouse update, has, uh, have we heard anything more from the town?
We have not.
Ah.
Uh, I know that they had a business meeting last night, but, um, my understanding that it was not on the agenda, so we're left without any word from them relative to what they'd like to do. Now, I know they have spent time reorganizing council with, with the election, and, uh, I, I checked in late this afternoon, but I was not able to see Mr. Dixon, so I, I sort of wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about what you'd like to do.
Maybe what we should do is, um, try to contact, uh, Loriann is the, the chair, so, um, I'd, I'd be happy to try to contact her or-
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. I think rather than, uh, than for us to, uh, I know there's a strong desire on the part of the school board to work in concert with the town, and they have had some discussions on this issue, and the fact that it has, uh, has moved a little bit on, uh, in terms of what's on their agenda, I would rather try to hear what, what their issues and concerns are. I know there were some concerns relative to parking and relative to the, uh, the whole use of this particular building, and I think it's, uh, it's appropriate for us to, uh, reach out and, and see, uh, if they have an interest, and if so, what, before we, we move on to further discussion regarding next steps in this area. And if you're, if you're willing to do that, I think that would be, uh, that would be great. And if for some reason, uh, uh, Kathleen, you get a chance ahead of, of that to touch base with Al, that would be super.
I did leave a message for him today, and-
Great.
Perhaps tomorrow I'll have a chance and I'll, I'll give you a call.
Okay, great, sounds good.
Okay, great.
Well, more, uh, from the business side of the house, Sue?
Nope, I really don't have anything.
Let, let me move back on the agenda and fill in a few things that we, we hadn't covered. Uh, if we can talk about board organization, I see we have a, a listing of, uh, committee assignments here, uh, that showed up in our packets. If you wanna take a second to review that, and, um, while we discussed this at the last meeting, I'm, I'm willing to go through and give a quick read-through of this for the public at home who may not be looking at, uh, at this particular document. And if there's any, uh, uh, any, uh, questions or ways that we wanna, you know, tweak this, otherwise we'll just go ahead and, uh, and approve this. But, so, I will serve as chairman of the school board, Linda, you'll serve as vice-chair. Our school budget committee representative will be you, Linda. Uh, Chet, you'll be the school board rep to the town planning board. Um, uh, Kathleen, you'll be the school board rep to the public safety committee. Uh, uh, Linda, you'll be the school board rep to the Seacoast Learning Collaborative. Uh, Kathleen will be the school board rep to Seacoast Educational Services. Uh, Chet and Kathleen will both, uh, uh, represent us with respect to the Seacoast School of Technology. And I'm assuming if I digress here that things went well this evening in that, in that regard?
It was terrific.
Nice.
It was wonderful.
Was it a good ceremony? Yes, yes. Great. Um, uh, the, uh, District Staff Development Committee Representative will be Kathleen Murphy. Uh, Chris will represent us as a delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association, Chris Hawkins, and will also be our school board legislative representative and our school board rep for liaison with town council. The bus committee representative will be Cliff Chase. Um, the health committee representative will be both Cliff, Chase, and Linda Montagani. And the facilities committee representative will be Chris Hawkins. The school to career representative will be Cliff Chase, and the policy committee will continue to be, uh, Chet Jablonsky and Kathleen Murphy. We, do we need to, uh-
Boy, there's a, there's a name that doesn't appear very often on this list.
No cheap shots on the tube. I'm, I'm finding that, uh, that I'm, I'm actually putting in a little bit of time these days in some other areas.
Yeah, I'm, I'm teasing. I'm teasing.
And it's nice to also have the Standing Committee of Council Members, which is the second page of this, which I won't review. We, we have-
Thought you might like that.
But that's helpful to have, and, uh, uh, do we need to actually do an official election to this slate, or it's done?
No, those are appointed by the chair.
Okay, you're there.
Except for the, obviously, for the elected positions, but you did that last time.
We did that last time, great. From a correspondence standpoint, uh, I see one piece of correspondence that, that you sent out to the community in our packets, um-
Could I comment on that?
Yes.
Um, in front of you is a letter that I distributed, um, to the students at the junior, senior high school, as well as the elementary school, with regard to the incident that occurred over the weekend with the arrest, um, and, you know, subsequent arraignment of a school volunteer. And it was, um, I guess I just wanted to brief you about the plans that were put in place, um, after, um, becoming involved in the initial report. Uh, we met on Monday as a crisis intervention team. The school department has one, made up of administrators, guidance counselors, school psychologists, teachers. Susan and I sat in on it. But this was really a collaborative effort. Uh, joining us were the members of the recreation department, Jim Hilton, director. Um, this town was represented by Mr. Dixon, town manager, and the police department, chief seer, and two of his men from the department. And we met on Monday afternoon to put into place plans to address this issue. How are we gonna handle youngsters? What, what, what's said? What, what kinds of questions are they gonna have? What kinds of supports can we put in place? And we did all that Monday. We had some help from SAS in Portsmouth. SAS is Sexual Assault Support Services. They were there in the building, uh, and they have been in the building, as well as the after-school program at the recreation department, supporting youngsters, answering questions, helping them to, uh, work them, their way and process the information that they were hearing, the rumors, uh, the, the information in the newspapers. In addition, we called in, um, our EAP, Employee Assistance Program. They, too, were in the buildings, have been in the buildings, have been working with our, with our professional staff. And, and the reason for this is, is that the staff, one, needs to deal with the issue themselves. The second is, is that they need to be able to continually be supported around how to most appropriately answer student questions. In addition, um, we had a pretty, uh, clear protocol relative to communication, and the communication came out of the superintendent's office. That way, the, the building principals could continue to run their buildings and take care of the needs of students. We met again on Tuesday, first day back. We met Tuesday night at six, uh, the whole committee. We reviewed what happened, what could we, what did we do, and what could we do better, and are there some things that we perhaps overlooked? And then, um, we have another meeting scheduled for Friday afternoon. Um, this was a, this was a tragic incident, um, but in retrospect this week, it's been amazing to watch people come together to support each other, to support each other's programs. Let me give you an example. After-school is a program that our elementary kids go to. Uh, they were picked up in the van and they were brought over as part of kids' care that was operated by Mr. Ingraham. The decision was made that that was a program that parents needed, because that, you know, that was the children's, um, after-school extended daycare. We did have five slots in our, um, extended daycare program at the elementary school, of which we filled, I understand. Um, Ree Cooper has opened her doors and done whatever she could to absorb some of those youngsters, but we still had other youngsters who needed some care. Um, the recreation department added additional staff, there was some summer help getting ready for camp, they were available, they brought them in, and our teachers volunteered to be over there after school. So we had teachers from the junior, senior high school, as well as the elementary school, support youngsters in that program. So I think that was the example that, uh, I, I was giving you, was this one of the community coming together. There's still a lot of questions unanswered, there's still, um, a lot of, um, concerns from students, and we are addressing those and will continue. Uh, I have recommended to the crisis intervention team that at, at some point, when the dust settles and we're a little more clear, that we would like to have a forum, a community forum, to help everyone process this whole incident. Truly, it has touched the lives of many people, and, uh, we would like to be in the position to support them as much as we can. So that kinda gives you a little up-to-date, brief overview of what's gone on the last three or four days.
Um, and I wanna just take a minute out and thank you for, uh, taking the time throughout this process to, uh, keep me informed and allow me to, uh, try to keep some of the members of the school board up to date on this as well, so I feel like that's been helpful.
When we tease you about committees, unfortunately, your committee is like twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
And that's the kinda thing that happens when you have that communication. It, it just makes things a lot easier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, let me, speaking of committees, let, let's talk a little bit about, uh, committee reports. Uh, Chet, can you give us our, uh, the, the formal update on the Seacoast School of Technology?
As you know, we just have returned from Exeter, and, uh, the students have received their certificates, and New Market was represented very well in receiving our certificates. And as you also know, that Mrs. Murphy is the, um, president of the governing body, and she gave her speech today, and she sounded very well. To go back a little bit in history, uh, the Seacoast School of Technology had its twenty-fifth anniversary, anniversary career in technical education excellence, which is, uh, from nineteen-eighty to two thousand and five. The twenty-fifth anniversary gala at the Rockingham Ballroom on May fifth, two thousand and five was a complete success. Approximately a hundred and fifty attended the gala. Much of the success was due to the excellent food prepared by the culinary arts students from the center. Eight thousand, two hundred dollars, uh, was raised, uh, as a fund for scholarships for the students. The SST had its monthly meeting on the sixteenth of May with the following. Uh, Mrs. Murphy was again nominated and voted to chair the governing board. Mrs. Murphy has many, uh, accomplishments at the center. The town of New Market has to be proud to have our superintendent of school chair that board. There are also support by the governing board to send to the project committee for further study. A project, Lead the Way, is what it's called, and it's a pre-engineering program for our students. I think it's gonna start in two thousand and five, the fall?
In the fall.
Right. As of May sixteenth, uh, two thousand and five, the enrollment at the center was five hundred and four. Last year at this time, it was four hundred and twelve. That's quite an increase. Project enrollment for eight, twenty-nine, oh, five. New Market, uh, in the first semester, uh, has fifty-one students. In the second semester, they had fifty. The SSE, uh, certificate ceremony, which is held today at the Talbot Gymnasium, was again a success, as I said before. There were a total of two hundred and twelve certificates presented to outgoing students. Last year, there were a hundred and thirty-seven certificates given out. Thank you. It's quite an increase. It's quite an increase.
Yeah.
In one year.
I, I think that the opportunities for students at the school will grow too as they begin their expansion program. As you know, they, they are going to stay at the old Exeter High School, but they are gonna do a significant renovation project. What year?
Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna start in two thousand and eight. Um, by the end of, um, this year, two thousand and five, the end of, in Janu- uh, January, December, we have to have to the state board, uh, a program of studies that will not only encourage students, but add to their life in terms of the everyday, uh, workday. And, uh, I'm on that committee, so we meet at eight o'clock in the morning. Just in case some of you would like to represent me.
Well, thanks, thanks, Chet. That's, that's really pretty helpful. Uh, questions for Chet on, uh, SST? Okay, uh, on the School Facilities Committee, I know that Chris isn't here tonight. Is there any other, uh, anybody else that has any comments?
Well, the only comment is we have a meeting, uh, June seventh, seven o'clock, here at the SAU office. Dan Bisson, our team design archi- architect from Team Design, will be here. He will be reviewing the options available to the district. The, the committee is very close, uh, to, uh, preparing a report to you and to making some recommendations to you. This, we are probably in the final leg of this process. Um, I, I expect that ins- um, information will, will be very helpful. Then the committee needs to mull it over and, and sort of take it in and make some decisions as a committee, and then move on to, uh, to your board meeting. Their goal was to try to bring a report into your second meeting in June. I'm not sure we'll be there, but that's their goal.
Great. Okay.
Uh, just FYI, we continue to look for land. Um, we are very close to, uh, you know, a, a proposal, so we're, we're continuing to work on that for the future of the school district.
Okay. The, uh, the Policy Committee. Uh, see, we've got a couple of these, uh, to take a look at tonight.
Chet's been busy.
Uh, I have the absence policy for the students. I, should I read all this?
Attendance policy?
Yeah, this is the attendance, I'm sorry, attendance policy for the students, not the absentee policy. I don't-
Which page is the, is the top one the current one, is the?
No, the two, you see two. Well, the first one is the policy that we're asking you look at, and the second one is the procedure. What would happen at the school?
I, I think I have to read it.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, all right.
Would you, would you be willing to go ahead and read that?
Students who desire to obtain the greatest benefit from public education should recognize, recognize that regular attendance and participation in classes is essential. And to give a little spin on that, at the, at the, um, receiving the certificates at the center in Exeter, this was stressed, very much so, for the students coming up to get their certificate, was the, was the attendance policy. They were given, they were given rewards for that, and there was a lot of them.
There were.
Very few didn't really get that. Further, students enrolled in Newmarket schools are required to attend classes unless excused for good reason. The superintendent of schools will, shall establish a uniform process for, number one, determining whether absences and tardies are excused or unexcused. Number two, deciding when a student received no credit and/or failed a course as a result of excess absences and/or tardies. Teachers will counsel their students on, on the importance of the regular attendance. Teachers are required to record and report student absences for each class that they teach. The classroom teachers shall notify parents of the likelihood of a failure due to absences up to and including the point where a student has received a failing grade for a course. Students are expected to make up work missed during an absence. Excused absences. Examples of excused absences include personal and family matters, illness, professional appointments, and approved school-related activities. Teachers will provide assistance and available, and, and available makeup work to students following excused absences. Truancies. While judgment on the pod at the principal and other school officials is necessary to determine whether or an absentee is excused or not, truancies can generally be defined as missing any class or a school day without the prior knowledge of the student's parents. Truance is reportable to the Newmarket Police Department. Uh, I think we should, wanna look at this and then go through the procedure? Are there any changes you think we should be making here, or you see some mistakes?
Just under truancy, uh, cross, whether or an absence, just, I think, just take out the word or, whether an absence is excused or not.
Or needs to come out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get rid of the whether. Okay, the whether, okay.
Whether an absence is excused or not.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything you wanna? I think we've covered this quite extensively in our meetings.
Yeah, we've spent a lot of time on this and listening to Scott. But is there anything else that you wanna, is it important in terms of how you feel? This is kind of a, almost a philosophy point, you know? This is our position relative to attendance as a board.
So important, yeah.
And we want the administration to implement those processes necessary to have, um...
Yeah, it's, is this the original policy from three eighty-nine? Have you tweaked this?
We did tweak it a little bit. All we did was add truancy is reportable to the Newmarket Police Department.
That's the one change from the original.
Yeah, which is, that was really the one change. We did not really change a lot on this, did we?
Okay. And, uh, just, just out of curiosity, how, uh, I, I know that we have been, uh, looking at our policies in relation to some of the, uh, recommended policies put out by the New Hampshire School Boards and, uh, their, uh, for lack of a better word, boilerplate on some of this. And how did this one stack up in relation to that?
We used it, we used their, not all of their, but we made sure that our existing policy-
Was consistent with, with that.
But this is not theirs.
I, I understand.
This is, I felt it was much better.
You know, just for me to co- comment on this and then others can as well, uh, this seems, this seems really fine to me. I'm really comfortable with this. Uh, other, other comments on, on this one?
No, I think it speaks to the issue quite well.
Yeah, yeah, I do too. Do, do we wanna be talking about the-
Procedure, we should, yeah.
The procedure piece?
Let me just read it. The attendance policy procedure. Students are expected to be in school and in their scheduled classes when school is in session. If a student is absent or tardy on a given day, parents, babysitter, and so forth, are to call the appropriate school office to report this absence and the reason for it. If the school is not notified of the absence, the school shall make every attempt to contact a parent in or guardian. All absences will be categorized as excused or unexcused, enabling the student to make up work missed due to the absence and to receive credit for such work. Students suspended out of school will receive a zero for all classes. The principal shall make a determination on the status of all absences in accordance with the following. Excused absences. Absences due to illness, doctor's appointment, family emergencies, special appointments, school-sponsored activities, or obligations which cannot be met at, at another time. If a student knows in advance he or she will be absent, it is incumbent to contact each teacher's class that they may miss in order to obtain their future assignments. Students tardy to class must receive an admit slip from the principal's office prior to entering the class. Makeup work will be allowed, but no credit given. All absences from class will count towards the class absence limit set by the school's absentee policy.
Comments on the, on this procedure? Thoughts, reactions, questions?
Um, students tardy must- This makeup work will be allowed, but no credit given. Is that for unexcused? That's just for, okay. We may wanna-
I might, yeah, I might, I think that needs to be a little bit further clarified.
More explicit.
Yeah. Now that I read it like that.
Yeah.
I, I, uh, think that ought to be- Chet, do you see where that is?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
That one sentence, I think, needs to say.
Un, unexcused, for unexcused absence, yeah.
Similarly, in the second paragraph, it, it indicates that absences would, are either excused or unexcused, and it doesn't differentiate who is unable to make up work.
Right, yeah.
Why, why don't we-
See, you can make up, I mean, the, the issue is, whether it's excused or unexcused, the issue is the learning. So they're always gonna be encouraged to make up the schoolwork, and the teachers will provide the schoolwork for them, whether it's excused or unexcused, okay? The issue is, is if it, if it is excused, they'll receive credit. If it's unexcused and they skip school, they make up the work, they won't get the credit for it. It's about the learning that they were trying to get to on that.
And we talked about that extensively too.
Right.
Yep.
Do, do you s-
I, I'm having trouble trying to understand what would motivate someone who has then skipped school to do the makeup work.
Well-
Other than to fall further behind and-
Right, and that's- If a parent finds out that their youngster skipped school, um, the parent may insist that the youngster make up the work. I would, I, I did. And, um, they may not have gotten credit for it, but they certainly did the work that was expected that day. And I think that's the, the message we're trying to send to kids. You may choose not to be there, but there's going to be an expectation that you complete the assignments.
And there will be an ongoing repercussion for not having done it and not having been there.
And our teachers will provide that for you. I think it's twofold here. The teachers will have the work for you, and they will make the assignments. And you are expected to do them. Um, but you won't get credit if you're, if you've skipped school. That's the, that's the one you have to deal with. That's the part of this that I think is really the key here, that you have to consider. How, how do you, what, what's the message that you, that we wanna send youngsters?
I think what we should do is combine that last paragraph with that paragraph. Um, be- because, well, first of all, they, I, I kinda think they belong together.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I think we should just say all absences will be categorized as excused or unexcused, period. Uh, excused absences, um, makeup work will be allowed, um, for excused absences.
Credit would be provided for makeup work.
Right, yeah, yes.
And, yeah. Needs all the words.
Yeah, we need to put the word, yeah, the wording together. So I, I think that we should just combine these two and make it clear. Excused absences, you, you can receive credit for, for the work. Unexcused absences, you, um, and, and suspensions, you will get no credit. But you may, but you will be given the opportunity to make up the work, you just won't get credit.
The, the issue comes up sometimes in, um, uh, middle school, especially with homework. And they don't do their homework, and they don't pass it in, or they don't get it in on time. Well, the real issue is the practice that they need to do that. So at some point, they finally lose credit. They do. They finally lose credit after so long 'cause they haven't got the homework in. But the issue is still that they attempt to try to get the youngsters to do that so that they practice the work. It isn't, this is about learning, so it's a hard one. Because some, you look at this and you say, is this punishment? Or is this learning? And I think it's a combination of things, and that's probably what's making it hard to-
Yeah, I, I, I gotta think, you know, the word smithing aside, that, that as we consider this practice, I have no problem with the policy piece. Uh, but for the procedure on this, I, I almost think that there might be certain situations where a teacher might wanna have some discretion about partial credit or full credit versus no credit. I mean, I feel like in, as I say, I have no problem with the policy as it's written. When we look at this procedure, I feel like we are saying, saying to these kids, you know, it goes to what you're saying a little bit, Cliff, about somebody, uh, the incentives, e- even if the kid has missed school and does the work, they're, they're, that, we are taking away from the teacher the option to say, in this situation at this time, uh, uh, i- instead of giving you a zero, I'm gonna give you, you know, ten percent or, or twenty percent. And, and I wonder about, about that as we talk about this procedure. Are we, i- if we were to consider something with teacher discretion around implementing some of this? I don't know, I just, I, I wanna open up that for discussion.
I do think that that falls under the Billy Wick of the building principal, and I think those things do happen. Jonathan, I think you're absolutely correct. But in this procedure, when you're trying to develop a consistent course of action over the school year, you, you tend to try to be specific. But the reason that you have a building principal there, or an assistant, or a department head, is for those gray areas. When you have a student that's in a gray-
Fine, I mean, if we, if we wanna put in the procedure that, that exceptions to this procedure, not to the policy, may be made at the building principal's discretion, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I feel like that may be, uh, uh, especially if that's what's actually happening. I mean, this reads a little bit like this is black and white. Somebody makes it up, they're gonna get no credit under any conditions.
I know that there are occasions that our teachers do exactly what you just described.
Okay.
There are situations that occur with students.
Okay.
Um, the, the rule of thumb is about learning and not punishment. And whenever you put learning first, and we should always put learning first, don't get me wrong, youngsters need consequences. I don't want you to think that, I don't think they do, they do. But it is about put learning first, and I would support that. And if we put that in there, that would give them a little discretionary ability, our teachers.
Right.
I'm, I'm- By leaving it out, we're, we're not giving them that option.
Yeah, and by leaving it out, we're basically, the fact that they're actually currently doing that, we're, we're basically saying-
They're not within the policy.
Exactly, they're not hearing, not, they're within the policy, they're just not adhering to the procedure we've outlined. And I would rather, if we, if we're gonna outline a procedure for them, that we allow some, uh, wiggle room or discretion in implementing that procedure. And rather than, they're gonna take that anyway, and it's not something that's necessarily sanctioned by the board.
W- when the handbook is written, aren't they gonna take this policy and tweak this?
All of your policies that, you know, and especially as we've been reviewing, they'll take those policies, and I've been taking your new policies, putting them in a new book, trying to develop a whole new book for you, and they'll have that. So that they'll, uh, make sure that there's cohesion, it's cohesive between the new policy and what they have in there.
Well, let me, let me offer a, a suggestion on this. Why don't we go ahead and do this as a two-part thing? I mean, because what we're doing is we're likely to wordsmith the procedure, but I didn't hear any, any issue with the policy here. Maybe we can at least get that out of the way so that what comes back to us is not the policy, but just the procedure? Does that seem reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
We can write, rewrite this and come back with you.
For the procedure.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we could take a, a, a little vote on the policy and have that be done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what do you think? Can we get a motion on, on the policy?
I'll make a motion to accept the attendance policy, uh, as presented.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And for the procedure, if we can bring back a little version with those couple, three changes that we discussed, we can, uh, we can sort of clean that up in the next go-around.
But you're comfortable with that whole process and the message that you're sending about attendance and, you know, not-
I think, I think, I mean, unless I misunderstood, I think, I think we pretty much are. And, uh, and I think if we add some sort of, something for discretion for what's actually occurring, that would be, that seems to work for me. Chet, would you like to go on and, and talk about excessive absenteeism?
Excessive absenteeism due to illness. Excessive absentee, absenteeism due to illness for students is defined as, A, absent from school for ten consecutive days. B, absent twenty-five percent of the attendance days in a nine-week period. A medical excuse or, or release will be required when a student has excessive absenteeism due to illness. Two, due to personal slash family business. For reason other than illness, a parent conference and documentation will be required. That has to define it, you know, that defines it as such.
I think they're just looking, it's looking for documentation.
Right.
And be, there's been occasions where you just get a phone call and it, there, there's a sense that this is very serious and we need to have some sort of documentation.
Now, again, on the handbook, uh, s- s- this would be written in the handbook also. Sort of students and their parents themselves can, can visually read this.
This is very close to what you, you had. Uh, we changed the policy numbers, as you know, we're trying to get up- Uh, we changed the policy numbers, as you know, we're trying to get up to speed with the New Hampshire School Boards Association and but this was almost word for word, wasn't it Chat, this one?
Yes, yes.
Questions on the policy piece, thoughts, reactions, people comfortable with this? Okay, let's let's talk about procedure.
Want to take a vote on this?
Oh, why don't we do, maybe we can do them both in one, depending upon what the procedure says.
Excessive absenteeism due to illness, this is a procedure. When a student has excessive absence, the building principal or his designee shall contact the family to de- to determine the cause. One, the principal may request a written excuse from the family physician. Two, the school nurse may be requested to provide assistance. Three, the principal or school nurse is authorized to admit a student in case where physician's written excuse is unnecessary or when a written excuse may be required. But the family indicates they have no physician or medical source available for this purpose. Four, the school nurse shall refer families to appropriate medical resources when needed. Five, the building principal shall report excessive absences to the superintendent of schools. Six, in case of excessive absenteeism, the building principal will implement procedures as outlined in the student parent handbook. Seven, the school district will provide academic assistance to students with verified absences beyond ten consecutive days.
A discussion, questions on this?
Kathy, I think I saw you make a quick note on the same uh, third person.
Yes, I did, Susan and I looked at each other.
Missed that one.
It should say, building principal or his, her, designee. Yeah, I, we could.
Or designee.
Yeah, Joanne, thank you.
Les Tonner. Um, is there any reason why on the seventh item, we we um, provide academic assistance uh, with con- ten consecutive days, not including the other defined uh, twenty-five percent of attendance in a nine-week period?
Um, let's, you know, we could have a student who breaks his leg and is unable to get to school. We would support that youngster with tutorial services at home. Um, I don't know if that, did I answer that?
No, I think, I think what, I think what Cliff is saying is, w- we're saying if if they're absent ten consecutive days, we'll provide the assistance. But we're not saying if they're um, absent twenty-five percent of that, you know, missing twenty-five percent of the days from that nine-week.
Quarter.
Yeah, so.
Consecutive, is that why?
Right, they may be.
Somebody has an illness and they're in and out, but it's a significant illness, you'd do the same thing. But this doesn't quite say.
It doesn't say that.
Right, and I assume we would do the same thing.
It's more difficult because of the in and out, they could be in school. When you, when you set up a tutoring and you know that a youngster's going to be out consecutively, it's very easily, I'm going to, it's easy to set up, I'm going to be there Monday, Wednesday and Friday. You hire somebody to do that. When somebody's just got sporadic in and out, it's a little bit more difficult. But your point is well taken, because we've had some youngsters who have been very ill, who have made every attempt to get to school one day, just so they could be in school. So I think your point is is well taken, maybe we should.
Just make it consistent i- in terms of the policy, if we're going to.
Beyond twenty, ten consecutive days or twenty-five percent, okay.
Does that, does that seem like what you were going to get there?
Exactly.
Twenty-five percent of a quarter or a quarter?
Or twenty-five percent in a quarter.
Yeah.
A quarter being a nine-week period.
Yes, yeah, we do have students that have, you know, had serious illnesses, you know, we've had youngsters on chemotherapy and so forth that we, would, that really wanted to be in school and would come one day, a week or, you know. We would let, whatever they wanted, we we would encourage.
Well.
We'll make those corrections.
With the, those changes are pretty straightforward, it's not a lot of wordsmithing. Uh, maybe we could have a motion to accept the this policy and procedure. Does that, does that seem like the way to go there with with the change that we talked about?
I'll make that motion to a, to accept the um, the ex- the excess excessive absenteeism policy and also the excessive absenteeism procedure with changes.
And I'll second those.
Any any discussion on this, any further discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's uh, keep trucking along here, we have some resignations. Let's see. Is it just this one for James Dougherty?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept James Dough.
And it's, and and it's, this has been a wonderful young man in our school district. Mr. Dougherty has always gone above and beyond what's been required. Has wonderful relationship with students at the middle school level. And um, unfortunately has landed a job in a neighboring community and um, closer to home and some other factors. So I, you know, I I offer you his his resignation.
Maybe we should accept this one with some regret here.
Sure.
If that's what I'm, is that, is that, I'm hearing you say that, Kathleen? Maybe we can have a motion that we are.
I I'll make a motion to accept with with regret, Mr. James Dougherty's resignation at the end of the school year two thousand five and two thousand, two thousand five.
Do we have a second for that?
I will second with regret as well and just um, want to thank him for um, for his, what he's done for my children and the community's children, my children really, really liked him a lot.
Okay, great guy.
Do like him a lot.
Any further discussion on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, nominations?
I'm pleased to place the name of Kathleen Fenneff for nomination as a speech and language therapist at our elementary school um, for the two thousand and five, two thousand and six school year.
Um, can I get a motion, we'll do some discussions here?
I'll make a motion to accept Kathleen Fenneff for the school year two thousand five, two thousand six.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the manifest for May in the total of five hundred forty-five thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Okay, we have the enrollment report. Anything that you'd care to highlight about this, Kathleen?
No, um, you can see in the spring, we do have a lot of in and out, especially at the high school um, level. But this, the elementary school remains stable.
Okay, questions about the enrollment report, comments? Okay, let's uh, action items. Uh, the for June, we have the student attendance policy, which we've covered tonight. Uh, at our next meeting, we'll be doing a little bit further review for, slated for July oh four with goals and uh, and performance review. Um, it seems like we're right on track with action items, any comments, questions around those?
No.
Okay, uh, let's talk about the calendar for June, July and the summer schedule.
Great.
You have the June calendar in front of you.
If it's appropriate to ask, um, I need to know who was attending graduation. The reason for that is, is that they will reserve seats. They have tentatively reviewed, uh, reserved two seats for each board member. So if if you're attending, just let us know, Mrs. Tibigan will be in our office tomorrow morning, so she's.
I just got an invitation today.
Did you all, I, I brought my invitation, so you all should get something in the mail. It was a beautiful invitation.
Really nice, very nice.
I I just thought it was really special, I don't know if we can, if they can see that on the camera, but I thought it was very nice.
Yeah, and um, I am planning to attend at this point in time, I, and I will certainly do a follow-up call, but I'm planning on being there.
I, I would, I will be there as well, but I I don't need two seats, I just need one.
Okay.
And I I'm also in the one, well, maybe I should check with my wife on this.
Would you do the, need that?
Yes, yes, I better do that.
And then just give us a call in the morning?
I can do that.
Yeah, I'll also let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
And uh, uh, I know that typically the 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 chairperson either hands out diplomas also makes comments or not, what what is the usual schedule for that?
Um, the, yes, the chair does um, assist in the, you know, awarding of the diplomas.
Uh-huh.
Um, past practice has also been that the chairperson of the board had a few comments.
Sure, I'm I'm assuming pithy comments, is that?
Words of wisdom for the students moving on to their next.
Something that will stay with them.
No pressure.
I uh.
No pressure, no pressure.
I told the students tonight in my speech uh, at SST that I was giving them a terrific, great gift tonight. And that was brevity. And they applauded.
And you thanked them.
And I thanked them. I think, I just a few words, uh, usually I also have a few words, but again, I I really think it's these ceremonies are about child, the children, the students, not about the adults.
Okay.
Chat, what are you, are you, you, are you sure, are you, are you?
I'm going to graduation.
Will Mrs. Jablonsky be joining me?
I'll have to check with her, she's, she's been ill, but she wants to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I am.
I'll call, I'll call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Just to let in that note.
There, okay, um. I'm looking at this and I seem to recall that on the twentieth, there's something for the uh.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
It's missing on this calendar.
Yeah, what what time is that commencement?
I don't know, I do know it's on the twentieth, it's usually around seven.
It's on my desk.
At the um, at the high school.
So it's, it's also after school, it's not during school time?
No, it's, that one is after school, it's in the early evening.
Early evening, okay.
It's a very nice ceremony.
It's very nice, I'll get that out to you in, over an email message too.
We have another packet coming also for the school board meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah, um.
That's right, we do.
I am uh.
Did you get a calendar last month, it's on there, a sheet of all the different activities.
Right, and I remember it being on there, but I don't remember the time for it and I had it. This is one of, also one of those ones that uh, um, having an eighth grader, is that?
I will check on that and email you all out tomorrow, it is on the twentieth, I just don't know the time, but last year it was at seven. Linda, you were there.
Yeah, I I can't remember if it was six or seven.
Seven o'clock, maybe six thirty, but.
It's, it's great too, it's a good, it's a good time.
Is this another one where there's, the school board members are?
No, not, no, no.
Be a part of anything?
No.
Okay.
Lengthy commencement address.
No, no, that, I really, having an eighth grader who is.
Middle schoolers, I.
You know. She would be, she would be mortified, you're absolutely right, she would be mortified.
Is the eighth grade graduation going to be held in a gym or the cafeteria, gym?
Gym.
Okay, great.
I'd also like to bring your attention to, they do have a ceremony for the fifth graders who are moving on to the, and that is on the calendar.
Right, and that one I uh, I actually remember that one from last year because I had a fifth grader move to sixth grade. Um, and we, just, just for folks here, we have uh, an extra school board meeting this month, next Wednesday to kind of uh, 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 do some work on, on Kathleen's evaluation. So that's really the focus of that meeting. Um, anything, uh, uh, we don't have July in in front of us, but what, let's talk a little bit about the, anything more on June before we talk a little bit about summer schedule in July? Okay, any recommendations for?
Well, your press, past practice has been that you have one meeting in the summer, June, in July and August.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
One meeting per month?
One meeting per month, that has been your past practice. Because of everyone's vacation schedules, both um, our schedules, your schedules, Joanne's schedules. Um, so you've done that.
That seems.
I think that at any time that you feel it's necessary to add another meeting because there's an issue, then that's, that's something that you can do. As long as you have a quorum and it's posted.
Well, why don't we talk about trying to do some scheduling in that regard this evening? I know Chris isn't here, but uh, but I think for us to at least make an attempt at that might be a good idea so that those of us who have any wiggle room, maybe in August at least, we we kind of have some idea of what we're trying to make happen. Uh, we're thinking maybe a uh, uh, some type of Thursday evening mid-month for those two months. I'm looking at the fourteenth of July. Does that seem reasonable, there's something else happening in that stretch that people know about or don't know about?
Is that a Wednesday?
That's a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
And, and how about the uh?
Vacation, no, no.
Oh, is there something I'm missing?
You know, July, July four, it just so happens that um, the uh, the New Market Youth Softball Association is selling raffle tickets to Red Sox Yankees game, uh, which happens to be July fourteenth. And Sue just purchased some of those from me this evening, so she's, you know.
She's planning on.
When she wins, she's not coming to the meeting. That's basically what the gist of that.
You could probably sell me some of those and I for sure, if I won, that wouldn't be here. But why don't we schedule the meeting?
Small television. Pull the game in.
That's true.
Yeah, well, why don't we plan on uh, on the fourteenth for a school board meeting at this point in time?
And maybe one of us will not be in attendance.
Exactly. And how about we, we try for Thursday, August eighteenth, does that seem reasonable for folks?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll just put those on on our next calendar schedule.
The only thing I would ask around those is that I'd be given the authority to move forward with hiring, that I not have to wait until July fourteenth to to um, hire, that I'd be given the authority to offer a contract, I of course would bring the paperwork to you. But if you would grant me that authority, then when we have candidates who come through, that you need to make an offer uh, as quickly as possible because you found somebody who's a great fit. You want to be able to do that in in a, quickly, not lose that candidate.
That's also been past practice, I mean, in case you're wondering about, that's fairly standard, I'm I'm comfortable with that. Do you need a formal motion?
I think we should put it as a formal motion.
Okay, can we get a motion that we grant?
Grant Mrs. Murphy the right to hire when necessary?
During this summer.
During a summer vacation, yes.
Can we have a second today?
Sure, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One other thing on the calendar, Greg Sargent's retirement party is going to be Sunday.
Yeah, the, it's on the calendar, yeah. And I think there, there are few folks who are likely to attend that.
I'm going.
Yeah, I'll be there as well.
It should be, it should be a wonderful afternoon, I have been over at the elementary school this week and they're rather excited about some of the festivities of this party, so I, as you know, your elementary staff is very creative, so I'm anxious to see what they've cooked up. It's gonna be fun, it'll be a fun afternoon.
Yeah, and I I also have somewhere on the agenda, the school to career one on the seventh, so I'm likely to be at a, at that one. Some event there, I think. Okay, um, more on calendar pieces that we need to discuss? Seven PM, it's our regular meeting time, is that, is that okay with you guys? Okay, um, I think we're talking uh, uh, non-public?
Yes, for the purpose of.
Right, and we have uh, one other thing. Right, and we have, uh, one other thing, before we go into non-public, I want to, uh, uh, those of you at home will notice that, uh, James Lozal is not with us tonight. Uh, that's because he played for New Market's, uh, varsity baseball team up in Littleton against, uh, the third-ranked team, uh, played our New Market Mules, which were ranked eleventh, and they won tonight. So, uh, if you're watching this at home, there's some congrats to our baseball team, and, uh, and congrats to James who, uh, who wasn't there, but, uh-
This means that they will play on Saturday, and they will be playing at, uh, in Rochester at Spalding.
At ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Just-
And do we know who they're playing? It was either Newport or-
Newport or Berlin.
Berlin, we don't know that yet, okay.
Great, congrats to them. Okay, uh-
Okay, I would like, uh, to make a motion to go into non-public session, uh, under RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three.
Okay.
Is that right?
That sounds good. We have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you much.
Night.
Let me pass this down to, to Kathy.
Thanks, that was a sign.
Why don't you just show her this one, this is something I brought and I-
Kathy, you got all the written stuff you need on this absenteeism and all that, the changes?
Yes, I'm, we're all set on that.
We, we are now gone, we are now off the air, that's kinda nice. I, uh, as we get into this-
Apparently someone else thinks your job isn't easy.
I guess so, huh?
Yeah, I just thought that was a, that was a, a good one, I thought you guys might wanna, uh, uh, see as a pass around. And, uh, and I don't know if it's worth, uh, uh-